Can't hear you.
I'm not there yet. I don't know. I'll be right back.
Can you hear me, Mike? Yes, John. I can't hear anybody. I don't think Dave can either. I can hear you, Bill.
Okay, we can hear each other. Log off again and log on and start it again. Okay, all right, bye-bye. Hi, Michael, can you hear me? Michael, can you hear me? Yeah, he cannot hear me.
I don't know why we're not getting audio. So you can't hear anything?
I can hear them. I can hear the music. I can hear the music.
All right, we're just gonna try. We'll open it up and we'll go from here.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we just start the meeting? If the three Zoomers can't hear us, I'll try to get their question and present it. So the first person is gonna be Susan Hickey. Yeah, I'm just doing the prep. And Angela Lamroom at the end. So why don't we just go alphabetical order? We'll go from backwards first and then we'll go frontwards first. So Dan, you'll go first if Bill can't hear us.
He can hear us now. Bill, can you hear us? Can you unmute?
Sorry about that. Yeah, you're fine.
I gotta get Dave in here to hear us. Sakari can't hear us. Let's see if Dave can hear us.
So you wanna do a roll call?
I can hear you, Michael. Can you hear me?
Okay, you wanna do a roll call? So, roll call.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Samaras.
Here.
Counsel Chow.
Here.
Counsel Conway.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Elliott. Mayor Leahy. Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
I'm present.
So we're just gonna go backwards first and then forwards.
Do the pledge of allegiance?
You have to keep order of everything? All right, yep. How are you, Susan? So you have two monitors. There's three councils that'll be zooming in to ask a question. You'll be able to see them. You'll be able to see who's speaking. And then when you're speaking, you'll be on the monitor. So I don't know if you wanna move towards the middle or whatever you feel more comfortable with. Yep. And then when you push the button and you see the green light, your microphone's on. If you want it off, just push it again. You'll see the red light. So why don't you... Oh, we're gonna go from reverse order first and then beginning of the alphabet next, which you don't need to know. So you open up your opening statement, then we'll take questions, and then you can conclude before we wrap up. So take it away, Susan.
So my name is Susan Hickey. Thank you for having me this evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm interviewing for the city auditor position.
I think you wanna pull the mic pretty close to you.
How's that?
A little bit more.
Get a little bit closer. It's not gonna bite me, right?
Yeah, yeah, literally about this.
Okay.
Okay.
I think you're further enough away that you could take your mask off 'cause it's hard to hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
How's that?
That's good, thank you.
See that I'm actually smiling. So, thank you for having me, Susan Hickey. I'm here to interview for the city auditor position. I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you for having me. As you know, I brought in some updated reference materials for you. The biggest change is in my reference section. I included a Philistocasus chorus. She's a sitting rep at the House of Representatives up in Concord, New Hampshire, and she's also a seated town councilor and has been for 20 years in the town of Derry. So she's included on my recommendation listing. So I brought that in for you tonight as well as some other materials that you probably already have, but just wanted to make sure that you had them. So as my resume shows, I started in a CPA firm, did audits for Massachusetts communities, mostly mass towns. I did some school districts, but I did some mostly towns and cities within Massachusetts. I then moved to being a finance director for the town of Goffstown and went into London Dairy in Derry and spent about 20 years between London Dairy and Derry. Derry is, if you're not aware, is a little bit more formed like a city in that the city council or town council has the authority to approve the budget. There is no town meeting, nothing like that, whereas London Dairy has a town meeting form of government. So it has a manager town council in London Dairy, has administrator town council in Derry, again with the authority resting on the town council for decisions to be made. So I have a wealth of experience in municipal government as a CFO. And as a CFO, a lot of people would think that in those communities, there's a lot of employees, and as you all know, that that's not necessarily the case. So as a CFO, it's rolling up the sleeves and getting the job done. CFO in Derry is akin to what I would consider the city auditor position. It's a lot of internal auditing, so I've writing policies and procedures to go along with those policies and being collaborative with people and with the elected body to make sure that something... That they bring things to their attention, making sure that there are things that they are agreeing upon that they would like done. So it's sometimes delivering great news and sometimes delivering not-so-great news, which happens. However, that is the nature of the position. But it's one that I enjoy and have a lot of experience, whether that's good or bad, I'm not sure. But I do have a lot of experience with that. I do volunteer work. I have been on the board of home health and hospice, so for hospice house. I was on the board and was the treasurer. And I've also dedicated my time to being an advocate, victim advocate, as a volunteer role in order to help victims of assault. So I have done that and some volunteer work as well to round out my work in town versus also volunteering myself, my background. So, what questions or what else would you like to know about me?
Well, I think what we'll do now is we'll go reverse order alphabetically and we'll each have a question. And then we'll end if there's any follow-up questions, and then we'll let you conclude with anything you feel like you missed. So we'll start with Counsel Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Susan, welcome to the interview. My first question, a question that I've asked other auditors or candidates for this position, I believe is important. The purpose of the position is to ensure to the Lowell City Council that the taxpayers' monies are being spent according to rules, regulations, you know, conform to what the state requires and federal government requires. So this basically means overseeing every department, literally. If some departments are not following procedures, how will you go about to make them or to get them to understand that they have to follow certain procedures? And I have a follow-up question to that.
Okay, thank you. Nice to meet you, Sarah. Thank you for the question. So what I would do if there are departments that aren't in conformance, I guess, or in compliance with policies and procedures that are set forth, I think it's really important to work collaboratively with them to help them understand why is there policy, why is there a procedure, and why does it need to be followed? Sometimes they get, if it's a department that's not financially based, let's say, it's a department that just takes maybe in some money or does a piece of it, but that's not what they do. They don't understand. So it's important to explain to them why the policy has to exist, why the procedures are the way that they are, and why they need to follow them. So I find that in my years of service, having that sort of relationship, that collaborative relationship, and explaining to them why they need to do what they need to do helps immensely in them understanding and then conforming with that. Obviously, I've worked long enough that I've had some fraud that I have had to deal with. I've had some procedures, policies and procedures that I had to write due to fraudulent activities in a variety of departments. And I've had to take, with the help of the elected body, had to take disciplinary action. So I have had to do that in the past. It's not optimal, but that has happened. So, but it's really catching it beforehand. So catching it long before it happens instead of when it happens. Seeing the trail, seeing the trend, and catching it first before it becomes a problem is really the key. And that happens with collaboration, with being present, with working with each department head, and having a presence with them, going to their location, speaking with them, talking with them, monitoring reports on a frequent basis, and seeing that there's gonna be something ahead that looks a little troublesome and having that conversation long before it happens. So that would be my answer to that.
Very good answer, and you did address the issue that there are some departments that are technically more aware of certain things than there are departments that really don't deal in finances and what have you. But the question, after all of this, if you're at a point and you find that someone is basically ignoring your request or requirements to follow certain procedures, and they might say, "You're new here. This is the way we've always done it, and that's the way I do it. That's how we do business here." That requires, we'll say... That's an issue that needs to be addressed, and sometimes it requires what they call the hard conversation. Do you have the capacity to do that?
I do.
And how would you do it?
So the first thing that I would do, and I understand in this position, this position reports to the mayor?
No, yes, to the city council, yes, correct.
To the whole city council, mayor and city council. So my first step would be, obviously, to inform the city council and the mayor of what's going on before I do something, to make sure that we're all on the same page, we're all walking in the same direction before something is done. At that point, yes, I have the ability to have the difficult conversations. I've had those in the past, and they have to be done. Taxpayer money is critical, and if that is overlooked, that's something that will, as you know, politically be very, very uncomfortable. That's something that my job would be to make sure you're never put in that position, to have rotten tomatoes thrown at you because you didn't know, you weren't told, it was in the paper. How come you didn't find out about it first? My role would be to make sure that never happens. So, yes, I can have those difficult conversations.
But it's all the procedures. In other words, they don't wanna change. My issue is, yes, you can find the problem, but, you know, I run my department. I do it in such a way, I get the answers, but it really goes against process and procedure. And I don't wanna do it. I don't wanna listen to you. I mean, what's... Or I say I'm unwilling to change.
Yeah. I've run up against that in the past of, in the beginning, of some that didn't want to do. They wanted to do their own thing. I think that's where the collaboration and the face-to-face contact on a frequent basis, as well as looking at reports and monitoring and working together and having them feel like I'm working with them as opposed to against them, gets me a lot further ahead than having... So that way, that conversation of them saying, "I don't wanna do that," that doesn't really take place. It might take place once or twice. It doesn't take place after that because then the conversation, as nice as it can be, is direct and firm as to what is needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to the chambers. Thank you for applying for the position. First question is simple, is what would your short-term and long-term goals be for this position in a city such as Lowell? I know you've worked in towns before, but coming to, again, a city such as Lowell with, I'm sure, the money is bigger, the budget's a lot bigger. So what would you, again, your short-term and any long-term goals be for this position and for the department?
Thank you. And again, nice to meet you. Thanks for the question. So, short-term and long-term, I certainly did research before I came and before I applied. I see that there's a management letter that looks pretty hefty from a previous year. Obviously, short-term would be to make sure that all of those issues are addressed. And I'm not sure if those issues are addressed or not, but if they're not, they need to be. So, short-term would be to get to know people, get to understand where everybody's at, see where things are at financially, from a financial perspective, and then tackle both the outstanding issues that have been outstanding for a while and get those resolved, as well as then do anything that I need to do to... to monitor going forward, monitor the revenue, both revenues and expenditures, and safeguarding the financial resources of the community, of the city, and reporting back to you, financial operations of where are things at, and making sure that that reporting mechanism is frequent and that you have the information that you need and that we talk about that information ahead of time, again, to avoid anything getting sidetracked. And long-term would be to make sure that we don't ever have to worry about a management letter such as this with several outstanding issues on it.
So in your position, looking at your resume, all the different spots you've had and have held, have you set policy? Have you redefined the goals of a department in the past? And is this something that you're willing to do going forward?
Yes. So in both London Derry and Derry, the framework for the CFO in those towns is more akin to what a city auditor would be here. It's doing internal auditing, it's monitoring revenues and expenditures, it's writing policies, writing procedures, making sure they're followed through. And when they're not, taking care of that so that way they are fixed going forward.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying for this position. The municipal auditors in Massachusetts require to do an annual report to the Department of Revenue. That entail balance sheet, which is, you know, year-end report, Schedule A, which include report of expenditures and revenue. Given that you don't have the direct experience as far as being a municipal auditor in Massachusetts, what are the quality that would help you learn faster?
So what would help me move faster? Was that the question, sir? Again, nice to meet you. Thank you for the question. So I am familiar with the cherry sheet and cherry sheet charges. I learned that when I worked for the CPA firm, again, most of my clients were in Massachusetts, and they were large communities, such as Stonem, Swampscott, Weymouth, Mass. So I had a good foundation for that there. What I would do going forward, to make sure that I understand, I have connections within Massachusetts, been on the new president for the New Hampshire Government Finance Officers Association, held, been president of the Training Committee, and also New England GFOA, which includes Massachusetts. So I do have connections and things that would help me. So going, moving forward, if there's something that I don't know, I certainly know where I can reach out and ask to get the question instead of just either A, not doing it, or B, winging it. I can reach out, I can see what was done in the past. I always find that there's never a shortage of people who are willing to help as long as I'm willing to ask the question, which I am willing to do.
How do you monitor department policies and procedures to prevent impropriety?
So that's a great question. So the first thing, again, going back a little bit, one of the first things I do when I get here is to read the policies and procedures of the city and see where things, what you have policies and procedures for. And then at that point, I would run reports so I could look there. Obviously, budget actual will tell me a lot, line item, budget to actual. Conversations with the department heads will give me a lot as well because they will tell me a lot of times if there are problems after we get to know each other. If there's a sore spot or an area that isn't going very well, we can have that conversation. From there, there's internal audits, internal auditing that can be done at each department, like that collects cash or has anything to do with cash, anything to do with revenue collection. So I would be able, I would go through and start that procedure.
Please share an experience you had in dealing with a difficult person and how you handle the situation.
With a difficult department?
With, yeah, department or person. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
No, we're all set.
Okay. So, difficult department, how did I deal with a difficult department? A lot of times, it's hands-on working with that department so there are no longer difficulties. It's working collaboratively and having them understand that we're on the same page. And the more we stay on the same page and work together, the less problems we're going to have with you folks. And having them understand that clearly in a collaborative way as opposed to me versus them. That's usually, when it becomes an us versus them, that's when people tend to put their heels in a little bit and become a little bit more difficult. If they understand that I'm working with them and they're working with me to get to where we need to go, where we need to be, which is in compliance with the policies and procedures of the city, then I find that it's less of an issue over time. So I've had, where I've had some difficult people, I certainly have had difficult people, the difficult conversation, which I think we talked about a little bit, sometimes has to be had. And it can be had in a nice way so it's not combative in any way, but it's making them understand why I'm here and what the importance of the role is. And typically, what I've found is, once I have that conversation, things start to come around. It's all based on, again, collaboration and making them feel a part of resolving the problem as opposed to me being, you know, coming in and saying, "You're doing this wrong, and we need to, you're doing this wrong. How about where we need to work on this together?" And again, feeling more of a collaboration, ever, goes a long way.
All set. Thank you. Council Mercia.
Good evening, Ms. Hickey. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Welcome to Lowell and to this council chamber.
Thank you.
I noticed on your resume that it says that you are preparing to take the Certified Government Finance Management exam. Is that true?
It is.
And do you have a date to take that yet?
I don't have a date to take that. They've had a hard time with COVID, with trying to figure out testing centers and where they can host the exam and still be in compliance with distancing and that sort of thing. So I will be getting a date. They're trying to figure out if they can do an online testing instead of having a bunch of people in a room together to do it or not, so.
So I see by your resume, you have 23 years' experience and you have done this in the southern New Hampshire area. What brings you to Massachusetts or to Lowell, for example?
So Lowell is really close to London Derry. So I kind of feel like we're a little bit connected. You're not so far down that it's, I'm very, very close. I'm 16 miles away, so I am close. I was really interested, I'm very interested in the position. It was intriguing to me, and it's what I enjoy doing. I enjoy doing internal auditing. I enjoy helping departments achieve success. I, that's what I really enjoy, is safeguarding the revenues and expenditures and the assets of the city.
So have you ever been to Lowell before?
I have.
Oh, good. That's nice to hear. You seem to be pretty well-qualified. Are you familiar with Schedule A?
I am.
Are you familiar with the tax recap, cash reconciliation?
Yes.
Certified balance sheet of the end of the year? Do you have any work and knowledge of the munis system?
I do, yes. Derry was all munis, so I was, so I'm very fluent within munis.
Do you have any information or knowledge to the GASB?
Yes.
Right, because I know you do GAAP. You're familiar with that?
Yes, familiar with GAAP and also familiar with GASB.
So what is the greatest quality that brings you to this, that you bring to this job, in your opinion?
So the greatest quality that I bring, in my opinion, is my ability to work with people in a collaborative way to ensure that the policies and procedures are adhered to. And if they're not, deal with that immediately. Not letting that wait until we get into a situation where things are either over-expended, revenue situation where money is not being accounted for properly. That can't happen. That has to be looked at and addressed immediately by working collaboratively with the department heads. And I understand there might be some that say, "Well, we've always done it that way." And my response would be, maybe that is how you've always done it. But this is why we have to do it this way. So if we could work together to get you to this place, it will be easier for you in the long run, and it's what we need to do. It is the policy that's set in place.
And there are some requirements as you're, as if you were the auditor, that you have to work with the school department and the financial department, with the school department, right?
Yes.
And another thing that we ask of our auditor is if you come to the city council meetings on a Tuesday from 6:30. And right now, we're on a summer schedule, so it's every other Tuesday. But in the winter, it's every Tuesday. And you would sit right there. You don't have a problem with that, right?
No.
Okay.
No, I've had plenty of experience making presentations to town council members and to the public, to the press. I've reported great news and I've reported not great news. And I'm able to do both without a problem.
And you put this report together?
I did. So I never got a chance to publish that, but that is, nobody in New Hampshire or Massachusetts area has ever done one of those and published it. It's a document that is a really consolidated financial statement
Sure.
for the council, for the public, to understand and see some pictures of the community as well as give some financial information, that I was finishing up in Derry before COVID closures happened and that sort of thing. So I took the initiative to do that on my own.
I could go on and ask you 40 more questions, but I'll leave that to my colleagues. Very nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Susan. So my question, just to follow up, is I know that you just took on a new role in the town of Derry about a year ago, maybe? Not Derry, yeah.
Hudson?
Hudson, yeah.
Yes, for the school department?
Okay, yeah. So what's going to, what intrigued you about coming to Lowell? Because just that if you did, were successful, we did want you to stay. We don't want you to move on if something else comes up. So could you just explain a little bit why you might be applying after you just took the new job?
Sure. So when I took the job for Hudson, what the job predominantly was, besides looking at the finances, was also to start a reopening task force. So I started there in May, getting ready for how do we reopen in September? And with principals, everybody has their own, again, that's a good place to look at for other questions that I've had. They want to do things their way. It's their building. But unfortunately, that can't happen. It has to be done a certain way. We had to have six feet distance. We couldn't have more than 13 children in a classroom. The buses had to have only so many on there. So what time do, does bus A and bus B need to leave in order to get all 2,000 students to the schools? Which came to 2:30 in the morning, which was impossible. So how do we go about getting parents to drive their kids? How do we deal with that, with traffic control? So my job predominantly was to look at all the different facets, from food service through educating in the classroom, through transportation, and then how does that ultimately impact the budget? So that's what I did in Hudson. So I wouldn't, I'm more comfortable on the town or city side than I am on the school side, but it was a great project to do. I had a lot of fun doing that and getting principals to be, again, be on the same page. When I got there, they were not. They wanted to, they wanted, they didn't care about COVID. They wanted to have lunch in the cafeteria. Well, that's not possible. So we need to work together on how do we understand that we can't do that? And giving them options of how I could do it. Well, they didn't like the options, so then it comes back to what it needs to be, what needs to be done. So I'm looking to be somewhere where it's supportive. And again, there's collaboration, there's support, there's communication. And there's challenges. That's what I enjoy. That's what I'm used to. So I wouldn't leave.
Okay. So that was more of a special project type of...
It was.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm all set. Next, we'll go to Council Elliot.
Hi, good evening. Welcome to Lowell City Hall. Just so you know, this position, it's kind of unique. On the planning form of government, the city council hires three people, the city manager, the city clerk, and the city auditor. So I just thought that was important, that it's, we do have a mayor who chairs, and we have an audit oversight. So it's an interesting structure that there really is no individual that you report to, per se. It's the nine city councilors. So good questions have already been asked. I wanted to ask you about your experience in the private sector. Who did you work for that you would do, whether it was field audits or those communities? I think you touched on it a little bit, but what firm was it? And was that prior to your tenure with the town of London Derry?
Yes, it was Melanson Heath. Back then, it was called Melanson Heath, and now it's just called Melanson.
Got it. Okay. Because I think that's important, because I see that most of your experience is in New Hampshire financial systems, but I didn't know Derry used munis. I think that's significant. I think that's very advantageous in this, in this position. So tell me, you were in London Derry for quite some time, and I know you did leave. Can you tell me your experience and why you left there as well? And you were in Derry for a number of years. And we're looking for someone long-term here, quite frankly. We've had a number of auditors, and we want some stability, quite frankly. We have a good team, a good financial team. I think the city is in very strong financial footing, and it's a result of this team. You are the auditor. You're independent and required to be independent as such. But it does, you talk about collaboration, and that's good to a point. However, we represent the taxpayers and so do you. So there are going to be instances. I like the fact that you mentioned the management letter. I'll get back to that. But can you tell me about London Derry and then moving forward?
Sure. So London Derry, I started a big community at a young age, I would say.
Right.
Felt like a million years ago, which it probably was, just looking great for my age. So was promoted very quickly, got to take over more departments, became the Director of Finance and Administration, and then became the Assistant Town Manager. So dealing with, having that breadth, the depth of knowledge, I guess, again, of seeing and working with the departments, and then ultimately also having, to have difficult conversations, I guess, is the best.
So did you leave because you were doing your job and others?
So London Derry, I left because Derry was a larger community.
Okay.
Had, gave more options, was run more like a city, like here. The city council or the town council was in charge.
Sure.
They made the decisions. And the position of CFO was more akin to what a city auditor position is here.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because, I mean, sometimes people leave under less-than-desirable or, because particularly in a job when you're in the audit, you have to make decisions, and sometimes it ruffles people's feathers, and it becomes political. But you seem very upfront, forthright, and I appreciate that because that's the checks and the balances that we have here, and I think it's important. You spoke to your experience. Can you talk about the management letter that you did read? We haven't had a discussion in the finance subcommittee that I chair or in the audit oversight, because we don't have a full-time auditor. But there are some recurring issues that do continue to surface. Many have been settled, and I think that's a credit to... And I think that's a credit to the financial team, the finance officer and, and previous auditors, quite frankly, in the city council. But we want these addressed and, but can, I mean, I, I know what they are, but in your opinion, what would be, say, the top two priorities to address? Cause to me, a couple of them are, are significant in particular, well, I'll share. In particular, budget reconciliation and why the budget that's slowed, it's not reconciling. Cause we need to be very cautious about our appropriations and not exceeding those appropriations. So I will, I'll stop there, but that's a priority to me. But to you, what's your, what's your thoughts?
Clearly, budget reconciliation would be priority. And whomever you have come in, whether it be me or someone else, I hope that they feel the same way. The budget reconciling, it has to reconcile. It has to agree to how you voted, how it's been passed. And then to be, in order to be able to look, be looked at and understand where things aren't going well. So for example, if I may, in previous places, they did budget transfers. So if they overspent a line, they transferred money from another line so nobody frankly would know. That's not, I don't, I don't advocate for budget transfers because of that reason. Because then how do you know what you really spent in that line and if it's been over expended? Why?
Sure. No, I, I think it's good to get, we like to get quarterly reports. I think that, that prevents that from, from happening. I can tell you, we have five revolving loan funds here in the city. Many special revenue funds. Any experience with that in, in Derry?
Yes.
Okay, I presume so. You did work for the school district, so I'm sure you're familiar with federal reimbursements.
Yes.
Particularly for food service. Okay. I, I know we try to keep ourselves to five minutes because there are nine city councillors. I just wanted to. I think that's it. So in Massachusetts, as you know, if you work for Melanson Heath, unlike New Hampshire, revenue sharing is a significant portion of, significant part of, of our budget process. Chapter 70 money for education, chapter, and then just local revenue sharing, general revenue sharing. Does New Hampshire do anything of similar nature? Because there's really no income tax. Maybe it's all derived from sales tax? This is more just curious, but.
Sure. So New Hampshire has a Department of Revenue Administration similar to here that needs to get involved in tax rate setting. Also approving financial statements, making sure that things are in, in compliance, audited by independent auditors and making sure that things balance. So that's, so they do that before I can set a tax rate. So in New Hampshire, it's up to the community. I set a tax rate and they approve it with their numbers as well to make sure that we're all on the same page. Both for the town side, the school side and any federal funds as well. So we'd set a tax rate, work with Department of Revenue to do that. So it's, it's a similar, similar to Massachusetts. They're just called something different, but it is a similar oversight body.
Okay. And lastly, in your positions, how, how, what, what vehicle, employment vehicle do you, do you use? In Massachusetts, this is a three-year appointment. We've had cases where there, I don't believe, I don't believe the last auditor had a contract, but how will you get hired or what is the, as I mentioned, the vehicle in your previous jobs? Is it, is it a contract?
So London Derry and Derry, I was appointed by the council.
Okay.
And it was, there was no contract. I was there until I wanted to leave.
Okay.
Hudson was a, had, it was a temporary, Hudson does do, schools do a two-year contract. But it was, it's a temporary or project type thing that I needed to help them get off the ground to get school open in September. There's not a contract for that.
Because to me, it's been, we've had some successes, I'm not, we've had individuals that have contracts. To me personally, I've never been a big fan of contracts because I think you serve and you keep your job like so many other people. And then we've had contracts and the individuals leave before they're, they're expired and there're not, not a lot of time for us to rehire. So I was just curious, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank Ms. Hickey for your responses.
Thank you. Counselor Drinkwoner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Susan, and thank you for your interest in the position and for taking the time to be here tonight. You've answered a lot of questions so far and, you know, a, a number of them have related to your experience with municipal finances. Happens to be, you know, mostly in, in the state of New Hampshire. You know, I know certain, you know, municipal finance experience is, you know, directly translatable. There are a lot of things that are, that are the same. You did mention having experience in the private sector, working with Massachusetts municipalities. I wondered if there was just anything you, you wanted to mention, maybe through your experience working with New Hampshire municipalities that you think would maybe be a unique type asset, you know, given, you know, some outside perspective, maybe things are done a little bit differently in New Hampshire compared to Massachusetts that you're aware of? I mean, is there anything in that experience that you'd like to just kind of tell us that, that you think might, you know, present a, a unique type asset for this position?
Sure. So one of the great things, there are, there definitely are some differences. Cherry sheet, cherry sheet charges. New Hampshire doesn't have that. They have something similar, but it's not exactly that. So there are, there are some differences. Luckily, when it comes to this position, there's really not a lot of differences. In that, doing an internal audit and, and having findings, hopefully not, doing internal audit and not having findings, but helping people make sure that they adhere to the policies and procedures and making sure that I safeguard the assets of the community is the same whether I'm in New Hampshire or whether I'm in Massachusetts. There might be an extra zero here, but for example, Derry's budget was close to $80 million. So it was a significant community with significant cash coming in, revenue streams, with abilities unfortunately, not naming any departments, but abilities for people to do things that they shouldn't have done. Which I had to then have a difficult conversation and take care of that situation. Again, I don't mind doing that. I can do that. So those, that skillset from New Hampshire, I feel could translate and come to here and be fairly seamless. There are some things that I would need to, obviously historical things and I, I have, like I said, a copy of your management letter that goes back to 2018 and hopefully all of those issues are, have been addressed. I would hope that they have. If not, then it's time for someone to address them. And I would be able to do that without a problem. So I wouldn't be concerned about coming from New Hampshire, coming here and saying, what do I do? I would, I would be able to transition without a problem and I'm confident in, in that.
Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, Ms. Hickey. It's the city of Lowell and thank you for, for the job. I, I just have a couple of quick questions and a, a lot of the questions that I had have already been answered, but just a couple clarifications. One of them, the, as we know, the auditor reports directly to the city council. But in reality too, the auditor is, is, is kind of part of that financial team. And in that team, we have the CFO and the, we have the assessor, the treasurer, the city manager, while working, you know, for the, a successful goal. How would you balance this, this role?
How would I balance the role, meaning with the internal staff that probably reports to a city manager forum versus this position which reports directly to the city council?
Correct. Because it seemed, you know, there's obviously going to be some overlapping and I'm just wondering, what, what techniques do you have to, to help to bring people together and how you would work with them?
Sure. So understanding that this. Oh, I'm back.
There you go.
There we go. So understanding that this position reports to the city council means that there's obviously some areas that isn't, that aren't to be discussed with other people outside of who I'm looking at now. There are conversations that we need to have if they come up, which they will, that we need to make decisions. And I need to take your suggestions and how you want to handle things and get those into the system with policies and procedures. And then ultimately making sure they're adhered to. That's the biggest one. I can write all sorts of policies and procedures, but if nobody adheres to it, then that's a problem. So making sure that they're adhered to is the biggest one. I've certainly been in the role as CFO for Derry. That's one that I can use because it's more akin, again, to Lowell where I had to do exactly that. I had to do internal audits. There were things that I had to communicate directly in a non-public session to the council for their decision or for some solutions that I would, some options I would give. I would always bring, I don't just bring problems. I like to bring solutions. So I would bring some options, get some direction and I would go forth with that. That didn't, even though I worked with other people that reported directly to the town administrator, which I did as well, there were things that the council and the finance committee of Derry wanted held closer to the vest. Which, that's fine. They had the, the purview to do that and that's what, exactly what I did. So I would be able to work with people and I, I'm confidential. Things that, things that I'm working on that need to remain confidential, that's not, that's not a problem while still working collaboratively with other people that report to the city manager.
Thank you for that answer. And just a quick follow-up. If you were the successful candidate for this job, what would the first thirty days look like for you?
Can you repeat the last part? I'm sorry.
Sure. What would the first thirty days look like in your job?
So the first thirty days would be getting to know people, getting to know departments, getting to know key players. And would be obviously getting to know you as board. And it would be looking at policies and procedures that you have in place now and under, getting a firm understanding for those as well as the MUNIS reports, looking at the budget, getting that reconciled. If the budget's not reconciled, that is a problem. So getting the budget reconciled, going through MUNIS and looking at each line item, seeing if there's something that's overspent, looking at your policy regarding line items, if they're allowed to be overspent or not, or if it's bottom line budget per department. Getting an understanding for that and being out with each department, getting to know them, getting to know what they feel, any problems they're having, any hiccups we're having. That would be the first thirty days. It would go by really quickly. But it's getting to know people, working with them, again, getting that budget nailed down. That's, that's key. Boy, I'm getting, I just want to go in and do it now, actually. That would be critical is, is getting that done, running the reports and making sure everything is where it should be is, is very important.
Ms. Hickey, thank you very much for your answers. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And finally, Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also want to welcome you, Ms. Hickey, to Lowell. And thank you for your interest in this job here for our city. The prior councils have asked wonderful and challenging questions and you have done tremendous job. I only have a couple of quick questions for you. You have a lot of experience. I just want to know if you could elaborate and how you would go about using your auditing skills to train the different department heads and how you can make the department, what, what vision you might have to make each department more efficient? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So running the, first of all, tying out the budget, sir? And making sure I understand the policy that you have set forth, whether line item, bottom line, that's extremely important. Hopefully you don't have any bottom line over, overages. They do happen and I understand that. Is there a transfer policy that you have in place or not? That's something important to understand. However, so I, working with the departments, having the MUNIS reports in front of me, having the previous year, doing a trend to see how they're going to go in the future, sitting down and, and having conversations with them, which doesn't mean over email or over a phone. It means actually getting up and going to the locations to have a conversation and to meet them, to get their feeling and have them explain to me why certain lines look the way they look. And again, going back and looking at some trends, whether they be, whether they're accurate or they're not, is a piece of it. But working, working with them to understand why. Because in, in every case that I've found, when they didn't have a good answer as to why, it's because there was something wrong. It's because they overspent a line and they didn't want anyone to know. It's because they wanted a budget transfer. They came and asked me for a budget transfer. Budget transfers aren't allowed. It needs, it needed town council approval to do a budget transfer. Which then the, the council would ask the question, why are we doing this transfer? Well, because the line was over expended. Why are we just finding out about that now? Why didn't we hear about this sooner if we thought that there was going to be a problem? So I think that even though this position is, is independent, it can work with in order to make sure that everybody is going in the same direction. And that's what's important. Again, us versus them won't, won't work. It has to be, we need to do this together to get to the end goal, which is to be as, as profitable, for lack of a better word, in our retained earnings and stand out and not have management letters with issues on them that haven't been addressed or opened, make sure they're closed and make sure the council is, is apprised of anything that is, that is going on. That they need, that I need to consult ahead of time. Not, not after it's done, not after the, the horses are out of the barn, so to speak, but way before that needs to be done. That's how it works. And that's how I can make it work with the departments for them to understand that.
Thank you. Thank you for your, for your answer. And you know Lowell is the fifth largest city in, in the Commonwealth. And we deal with a lot of contractors, we're a lot of bidding process. Can you elaborate a little bit on your standard and requirement to make sure the procedures are followed for the city?
For, as far as contracts go?
Yes.
So what type, are we talking contracts with vendors? Are we talking union contracts?
Whichever one you want to address. In general, probably more with vendors since we probably have a lot of private contractors. Just make sure that the city follows procedures and make sure we're in compliance.
Okay. So going through, that would probably, that would be within my first thirty days is to look at the contracts that you have with different vendors, reading those contracts, making sure that they're properly approved. Making sure if there's an RFP process that needs to take place, getting the RFP ready to go ahead of time. So that way it's not a, it doesn't have to be a quick decision that's made overnight. We can get the RFPs out, get the responses back, analyze the responses, make sure they're in compliance with the policies that have already been set here and then go from there. So make, understanding each vendor policy, each vendor contract and how it's being adhered to is extremely important, just as important as budget reconciliation. Because again, if, if those aren't being, if they're expired, if the RFP hasn't been done, if they're not performing the way that we want them to perform. They work for us. We don't work for them. So situations of the tail wagging the dog, so to speak, of a vendor feeling that they can get away with. can get away with anything and not being in compliance with their, what their terms are, they need to be held accountable as well. So, being able to hold them accountable is extremely important and something that I would, that I would do just as much as I would on the inside as well. Everybody needs to be going in the same direction. Now, we have a vendor that doesn't want to go in the direction that we've set forth, then maybe that vendor is not for us. We're the ones that pay them, so we're in charge.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So that concludes the answers from the councils. Sure. One more follow-up. Councilor Elliott?
Sorry, I have one more follow-up because, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, one of the findings, and we've had some challenges in the last, I'd say, year, year and a half regarding purchase orders. Tell me what the process is in Derry or even in the Hudson School District of London Derry with, with purchase orders, closeouts, deadlines, and you talked a lot about appropriations and budget transfers that are not allowed. We have, we have things called bad bills, and part of that process is the prior auditor closed out appropriately, so any purchase orders as of June 30th, and then bills come in. What do you, do you have experience, what's your experience with that in your prior positions?
So, we also have had purchase orders that departments would try to do. Sometimes they were allowed, sometimes they weren't. So it was my job to determine the threshold. Why are they doing a purchase order? Is there a specific vendor? Or are they just trying to capture money to roll it over to the next year? That wasn't allowed, so there needed to be an appropriate vendor with the appropriate documentation, such as an RFP, to come along with it. And I would hold, I would allow a purchase order if the services were going to take place within 60 to 90 days. At 90 days, that's not really a purchase order anymore. That's trying to hold funds from a previous year and apply them to the next year, instead of using next year's money.
I mean, I, I guess, excuse me, I'll be a little bit more specific. Say you have a purchase order with a vendor on an annual basis. What is the, to prevent the bad bills from coming in after that period of time, because we've had those circumstances, what would be your process? And you talked about collaboration, but literally, what would be the process to prevent that from coming in? And then it lands up on the city, on the city council's desk saying, okay, it's a bad bill. It's not the fault of the vendor when payments have not been submitted, invoice have not been submitted, but it's, it's, it's an issue, we see it in a management letter, we've dealt with it a number of times with the finance subcommittee, and we want to, I'd like to know, I want it to end because it's a bad bill. People have to hold themselves accountable at home when they don't have enough money, and they got to pay their bills on time.
Agreed.
And the taxpayers expect the same thing here.
Yes, I can see that, and I'd be curious as to why that's happening, when the easy answer, if I may, is to make sure by looking at dates of when things come in, dates, matching the date on the invoice to the date on the purchase order, to what's come through, based on my conversation with the department head, why is, why is there, why don't they match? Why is there a difference there? And why am I just hearing, finding out about this now? In a case like that, perhaps the purchase order needs to be denied, and they need to use next year's funds, even though they might want to pigeonhole them and hold them for another project. That needs to be looked at very closely. And that is something that we, in New Hampshire, we, we do as well. If things aren't, purchase orders have to be done by June 15th, they have to have the proper documentation, and they have to be spent within a certain time, they have to match. Again, it's all dating and watching each invoice that comes through. That's part of, that's part of the job.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Susan. So, we're, we're running a little bit late, but I don't want to hold you back, so if you want to summarize, if you feel like you missed anything, what else do you want us to know?
So, I, I'm extremely diligent, loyal, and I'm dedicated, looking to, to go someplace and stay. I agree about contracts, having a three-year. What if I want to be here 12? Does that mean that I hope that every three years I get a new contract? I want to stay in one place. I feel that I could provide a great service to you, to everyone here, and I, and also to your departments as well, in changing their understanding of, of what they need to do in order to provide the best accountability for the city. It is the taxpayers' money. You're absolutely right. And there's nothing that will aggravate taxpayers more than it not being watched and not being adhered to in the proper way, not being spent in the proper way. And that's not a position that I would want any of you to be put in. So it would be, I would, I take it as seriously as my own wallet. So if it's, if, it has to be, it has to be watched, it has to be monitored, and the communication needs to happen ahead of time with us. Needs to be a collaborative group here to be able to work things out. So, I think that's, that sums up the type of person that I am, the type of worker that I am. Very diligent, very dedicated, one of those that somebody could send me a text at 10 o'clock at night, and I would return the phone call. That's, so I'm, I'm hands-on. I roll up my sleeves, I have no problem doing that. I definitely have no issue having a difficult conversation. I can do it in a respectful way, always respect. However, at times, there are difficult conversations that needs to be, take place, and that would end that situation, and it wouldn't have to happen again. So.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary, should we take a couple of minutes and then, okay?
Yeah.
Yep, all right. We'll take a two-minute break.
We do have a couple of minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate meeting all of you. Thank you. Hope to hear from you soon.
No!
Why does this have to be, this guy's son is lying, baby.
I appreciate it.
I, 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 I,
Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Lung, for interesting and applying for this job, and welcome to the city of Lowell. I just have a, you know, have a lot of, you have a lot of experience, I see, just have a quick question for you. Normally, we get the audit report at the end of the fiscal year, but, you know, I'm more interested in to see it, to have some kind of communication with you more frequently, maybe at different intervals throughout the whole year. How do you plan to keep the council appraised of the financial integrity of the city throughout, throughout the year?
I'm sorry, you know, like, I might have a hard time because of kind of echo in here too, do you mind, someone can?
Sure, I could ask, I could rephrase the question and just simplify it. What we're looking for, or what I'm looking for is hopefully that you can keep us updated more frequently on the financial integrity of the city. How do you plan, what is your communication plan to keeping the council appraised or updated about the financial integrity of the city?
Okay, I think, no, we don't have to wait until the year-end audit in order to improve the process and also the integrity. If we do a routine audit on a monthly basis, you know, or like quarterly, we can identify some kind of problem, and then we can deal with it right there very immediately, without, you know, holding off until the year-end to see the reports, say, okay, no, hundred percent of error. And of course, you know, sometime, you know, it could be like an internal training, the new staff may not understand the concept too, so we can like address it right away to get into like future error, or, you know, make a bigger problem at the time. As far as the integrity part, right, again, you know, like, we had to work with the team, make sure everyone is doing their job, and if they have any question or anything, right, they can come up, you know, to ask question, to make sure they understand what they're looking for. And also, I also will be like provide some feedback for a project on and off, saying that, okay, you know, you're doing great, you know, now you can like working independently that way. But, no, I'm not quite sure your integrity is the outsider or more like an internal staff issue at this one, so that I would say that I will work with the team for the integrity check and address it right away without prolong, you know, later on problem.
Okay, great, thank you, and just a follow-up on that. You mentioned it's gonna work with the staff well and so forth. How do you plan to use your auditing skill to train the different department heads? And make sure that everybody's on the same page and be efficient?
On my experience, we're using our chat card or the chat that we receive, make sure that, you know, the chat that we cut is, you know, to the invoice. And then, you know, also, you know, the chat that we receive, make sure that, you know, is account receivable account, and then we were tracing back to, you know, where is the original billing is. And then we go for a whole nine yards, such as, you know, like, first of all, you know, we go take a look on the timesheet, make sure the hour is correct, and then, you know, whatever we pay the person is correct, with all those taxes deducted is correct. And then, you know, we go to the GL, make sure, you know, you book on the account correctly into the account. And then, you know, at the end, you know, each month, you know, we do a quick look on, see where is the very, I would say, the outstanding number that pop up, so that you're like, suddenly, you know, this money very high in account receivable or high payroll taxes, then we will look into it, you know, in more in-depth that way. But it's more like a routine itself until the end of the year or audit.
Thank you for your answer, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, Ms. Lung, to Lowell. And we're certainly glad that you applied for the job. I have a couple of quick questions here. Although the, the city auditor reports directly to the city council, the auditor also is part of a financial team, and in that, on that team, we have a treasurer and assessor, we have CFO, city manager, all working together for a common goal. Could you please explain how you can, how you could balance that role?
Since it's under the, oh, since it's under more like an A and F department, right, no, normally, I will report to the CFO, and, you know, a lot of time, you know, the CFO will request, you know, some special report from me, and then she will evaluate, and then she will keep on asking for more report to do her work. But, you know, because in here, it sounds like that I report like multiple departments too. So that, you know, in order to balance it, I think, you know, like, I have to know each person's, you know, what is their role is, and what is their job, and what they are looking for. And definitely, you know, as an auditor, right, you know, you have to have an individual thinking too, you know, to make sure each department treat individually, and that way, there's be fans where, you know, there's no conflicts, you know, with one or the other department.
Okay, thank you, and one, one quick question. If you were the successful candidate for this auditor's job, what would your first thirty days look like in the job?
I was shadowing with people, I try to learn the system, what your system you're looking at. And also, according to this role, you know, to supervise seven people, right? I would sit with every single person in this team to learn from them, you know, basically, they have been with this department for a period of time, you know, let's see, you know, what kind of input they could provide to me, and also, you know, that is a baby step that for me to learn the basic foundation for this position. And then, as we learn, as I learn more from them, then definitely, you know, I will be like, get all this information and create my own management style to, to get the work done the way that, you know, you guys are looking for.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, drink water.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, Ms. Lung, thank you for your interest in the position and taking the time to be here with us tonight. I know, in looking at your experience in your most recent role, you have had some experience supervising employees within your department. You're going from, from that role as an assistant director to this position, I think would be, you know, a slight step up in terms of managerial responsibility. Just wanted to give you the opportunity to say, you know, in your experience, what do you think has, you know, prepared you, you know, for that that step up in managerial responsibility, and how would you handle the role, you know, coming into in office with, with new employees, in terms of supervising them and making sure everyone is, is on the same page?
Okay, definitely, you will be like a step-up position for me from a, like a more like a program assistant director, have a lot of background of the accounting side, and also, you know, interface with a lot of auditor. So then, you know, like, I see, every time when I work with the auditor, right, I find, you know, I learn something from them too. So definitely, you know, like, this will be a good opportunity for me to, to be in this field as an auditor. And also, you know, I find, you know, something very challenging and really interests me that, you know, I want to go into this field to learn more, you know, to find, okay, where is the error is, where is the mistake is, and how can we improve it? I love that, you know, that kind of challenge, so that, that's why, when I see this position is opening, you know, okay, you know, especially if the city work job too, you know, as I say, now, looking for a long-term job relationship for the next ten years to fifteen years. So, you know, and this is one of the reason why I apply for this job, and hopefully, you know, I have the opportunity and learn from you guys, and also, I could provide what I might knowledge to you guys and get this work and done what you're looking for.
Thank you, and I think it's very admirable that you're sort of looking for, you know, a new challenge and a new thing to take on. Is there something specific that drew you to the city of Lowell or municipal finance in general, going from your current organization to, you know, a municipal finance position?
I'm very open at this point, you know, it's not like have to be a city job or anything, it just, you know, I want to be an auditor. Like, even though it's an internal or it's a government job or auditor, but, you know, just more into that field right now.
Thank you, all set, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott.
Hi, good evening, Ms. Lung, welcome to Lowell City Hall. So you, in your opening statement, you talked about working with the inspector general, and could you expand on that a little bit, because a large part of this job certainly is being independent, providing oversight and working with the State Department of Revenue.
Okay.
But you had elaborated a little bit on inspector general and reporting requirements, so could you talk about that a little bit?
Now, they have a website, the OIG have a website, then, you know, they have an exclusive list on their website. So basically, I would download that website and cross-match with our database twice a month, because like, employee might be not on the list at beginning of the month, but doesn't mean that, you know, two weeks later, they are not on the list. So that, you know, we're running that list almost like twice a month with our new hire too. And also, the existing employee tried to avoid, you know, things happen. Once we identify it, I remember, you know, like, about five years ago, that is the first time I ran the report, and I was so amazed that, you know, we have like a handful of employee that is on the list. And then, you know, like, at the time, you know, once we identify it, we suspend the employee
Okay.
from the payroll, and then, you know, we report it to Mass Health, because we cannot do much on our end, but because it's a Mass Health program too. So, we report to Mass Health and get the information, instruction from Mass Health to say that what should we do in next. And then, Mass Health will be stepping in with the OIG department, and then they was asking for some support document from us. And then, they will say that, okay, no, as far as I know, all these people, once they are on the list, they cannot be employee anymore, so. And then, we, we just do the reporting on that side.
No, that's good, and I did read in your opening letter that, you know, collaboration is a big part of your job, where I see you working with workers' compensation and inspector general, and in some respects, it's similar here, we have a chief financial officer for the city side, and then, there's a business manager on the school side, and then, your job. And your job is to report to us, protect the taxpayers, as well as work in a collaborative nature to prevent problems from happening. I wonder if you had a chance to see it, you know, every year, we get a management letter from, from our independent audit that audits the city books every single year. If you haven't seen it, do you have any experience with taking findings and, you know, recommending corrective action to ensure that there are strong internal controls, there are no material weaknesses, and those controls that needs addressing can, can be, can be addressed. In your experience, your audit experiences, anything of similar nature that would, would help you in this job?
I think right now, no, we, we did a lot of reporting to the OIG and BSI, and I think, you know, the only thing is that I'm, hopefully, they can respond those report more timely manner. I know sometimes it would take up to a year in order to get a response back, and then to tell us, okay, now, you can suspend that employee, not to pay them, or something like that. I wish they can do a little bit more, more proactive that way, because for more, I see that, you know, they are, when we do an audit, right, dollar-wise, that they are abused on, right? You definitely, you know, it's a huge numbers, so that the sooner we can add on it to do it, to suspend the employee, the better, you know, of course, you don't want to spend the taxpayer money on something that we know if they are in fraud, but, you know, we have to continue to provide service until a year after. But on the other hand, you know, I understand that, you know, there's a lot of procedure investigating, you know, on the government side, that, you know, you cannot just say, you know, snap on the finger, say, okay, now you can stop the program and stuff like that. So then, you know, for us, how to improve it, I think it's like, if we could announce it more on the news, saying that, okay, there is a fraud going on for this kind of program, and we can using that to give it out to our employer and employee, then they're aware that, you know, government is on top of it, so they could prevent it. They're, you know, there's funny acting or something like that, at least they're aware that someone get caught and someone is put in the jail or something that, you know, or some kind of reimbursement, because a lot of time, what I'm seeing that government say, okay, you can suspend it not to pay them, but they're not really have any action afterward. So then, you know, people just say, oh, yeah, they find it, so what, you know, there's nothing they could do, or something like that. I wish the government can do something more.
Great, thank you, you've answered my questions, thank you for applying. I appreciate it, you have a lot of great experience, so, thank you.
Thank you, I'm actually next, and you answered a lot of my questions already, so, basically, I'll just ask you, what attracted you to to Lowell, and what attracted you to apply to Lowell?
Actually, you know, like, I think it's the positions. It doesn't matter, like, I travel, like, within an hour is acceptable for me. And I think it's the position, the title, you know, when I said that it's the state auditor, the city auditor, right? And I said, hmm, this is a very challenging, you know, position for me to step up, to be in. And why Lowell, it just, I know, I know that Andover have another position too, but, you know, like, it just really, it's really just, you know, in the right time, right position, and I just apply it. You know, and I was like, so surprised that, you know, when I got the call from the interview saying that, oh, okay, you know, I got, you know, like, at least I got a opportunity to, you know, step into and to explore it a little bit from, you know, how this city work in here. I might move it around here, you know, once, you know, once I got the job, you know, like, I know the city of Lowell is pretty good area too, from my people, some of my friends who live around this area too. So maybe, you know, once I, if I have a very good long-term relationship with the job, then definitely, I will move up here too.
Okay, all right, thank you, and next we'll go to Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Lung, for being a part of coming to our city of Lowell and applying for this very important position, thank you for doing that. Have you ever been to Lowell before?
I think I pass by here all the time, but not inside Lowell, except I went into UMass Lowell, just visit the campus a couple of times, and just kind of like wander around a little bit. But, you know, I have a lot of, actually, I have at least three staff who live in Lowell, and they don't want to move off from Lowell after they move in here, so that, you know, and they talk about it quite a bit, you know, like, because they are in a border, and they, they love it too, you know, that's why I got.
Thank you so much, are you familiar with Schedule A?
From which form?
It's a statement of public debt, are you, are you knowledgeable on any of that?
No, not that one, no, no.
Are you knowledgeable about cash reconciliation, the tax recap?
I don't do that one, no, but I do nine forty-one, nine forty, those small like.
What about certified balance sheet at the end of the year, are you
Yes.
familiar with that, you are, do you have any knowledge of Munis, which is our financial management system?
No, we are using NetSuite on our company, so, no, not with the.
Are you familiar with GASB? GASB, are you familiar with that?
No.
Are you familiar with GAAP, G-A-A-P, are you familiar with that?
Yes.
You are, what does that stand for, do you know?
Journal Accounting, something principal, I've been out of school for years, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Let me ask you this, out of curiosity, where did you see this ad? What, where did you see this ad to come, that the job was opened? In the newspaper?
Indeed.
Indeed, indeed, okay, I, that's, I was just curious about that. What is the greatest quality that you will bring to this job, should you get this?
I think my, anytime, let me see. I think my reporting skill is very strong on that, especially if I need to pull all kind of data from different report, to summarize as a one report, to make it easy to read. Because like, I, we are working with Mass Health, they are requesting all kind of one-time report, all the time. They just want to take a look at a snapshot, like, at this point, what is the statistics for something that, you know, we never have any report for that. So then, you know, I have to pull a lot of database from the backend to create. to create a report to summarize what they are looking for. And I love that, you know, to do that.
Are you, could you tell me what type of person you are? Are you a micromanager or a delegation? Do you delegate your work, or do you micromanage? What?
I always say I'm a half and half. At the beginning, I would be micromanage, especially for new staff coming in. I want to make sure that, you know, they understand what we are looking for. Because I know that a lot of time, you know, when you train a new person, they will say, yeah, yeah, I understand, understand. But the outcome is not what we are looking for. So at the beginning, well, once I check on their work more often and make sure, you know, they got the concept, everything is correct and acceptable, right? Then I would delegate the work, so that they could explore and learn from themselves too. But of course, you know, at the end, you know, a lot of time, you know, I would review their report before, if their report, you just submit it out to the higher management, right? I would look at it, make sure they are correct before I submit it out. But I would more on the dedicated side. I would say 70% on delegation, 30% on micromanage.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr., Ms. Leung for applying. Thank you. Given that you don't have direct experience, municipal experience, what would be a faster way for you to learn?
Well, maybe I should say a little bit more background myself. When I first came to US, I was 18. I don't speak any English at all. And come to a point that now I become Assistant Director, and also, you know, I could manage a team, you know, I put a lot of work. That's mean that, you know, I can adapt very fast from what you have. And definitely, you know, I will ask question. You know, if I have any question, or, you know, when I have more problem, or, you know, definitely ask question to, you know, to try to understand what you are looking for and get the job done. But definitely, I'm a very fast learner and adapt very fast from anything.
You have a lot of experience supervising staff over the year. Please share an experience that you had in dealing with a difficult person? And how do you handle the situation?
Actually, I, I have a team of seven. I have three builder and four accountant. They have been with me for a very long time. Especially one of the, my manager have been with me for 13 years already. So we have a very good relationship when you come down to work. And then, you know, we also, me and him, right, also play a good cop, bad cop. I'm always the bad one. So that way, you know, when there's a difficult employee show up, right? So he could, using his good, like a good cop attitude, to talk to the, the difficult person, to find out what is going on. And then I would be the one that, you know, as a backup, you know, like, I would point out what kind of mistake, what is not acceptable, and need to be done correctly, and, you know, try to like, make the person understand what is the company policy and procedure, and what is the outcome, you know, if he didn't do it correctly. So we work out pretty fine that way, you know, like, a lot of time, you know, each person have a different personality, you know, with us like this, you know, one positive, one negative, right? The difficult person, you know, actually, they would change the attitude in some way that we are looking for. It depends on the person, you take the hard way or the soft way. But we, since we are both together, you know, we see some kind of improvement all the time. So most of my staff, you know, have been with us like at least six to seven years. My manager with me for 13 years, and our relationship is always great.
Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Angela, how are you? Nice to meet you, and things are coming down. Yeah, a quick question is, what would your short-term and your long-term goals be for departments, should you get the position?
My short-term goal and long-term goal, hmm. I feel like that I'll live day by day, no, just kidding. You know, like, especially after this pandemic, you never know what's going on, you know, next date anyway. But my short-term goal is like, um, let's talk about my long-term goal first. You know, like I say, I'm looking for a job that is for 10 to 15 years. If, you know, this is my job, definitely, I'm going to move in this area. Then that is my short-term goal, that I'm going to purchase a house around here. And, and stay in here and until retire, thanks. And I think for, for this job, right, I would say that, you know, it's a good opportunity. And again, for 10, 15 years, it's a good goal to stay as an auditor. And I believe, you know, with nowadays technology and rule and regulation, they're changing so fast, right? We have to keep up to it, so that, I think, you know, doesn't matter what kind of goal, you know, the goal is like, to get the job done and be fair and square. And, you know, try to, like, I would say, like, because I work in a nonprofit, right? I always say that, you know, like, put it back to the community. So same thing, you know, working for this city, right? Same thing, and, you know, there's something that to put it back to the, to the community too.
Great. And so, as your resume, you supervise eight direct and indirect staffs. So how many, you know, I know with the whole COVID situation, were you from home, or were you in the office a lot over the past year?
I'm in the office every day.
Yeah, great. It's awesome. So do you directly supervise people in the office? Are you their manager?
In the office, yes.
How many people do you supervise, thank you?
Um, well, office is about 40 people.
Right.
Yeah. But I have seven people and one manager that is directly under me. The rest is in other, not division, but in other part of the program.
And if you get this position here, also, you'd be a department head, right? And, you know, similar to Counselor Noon's questions before, if you had a discipline problem, or if you had somebody that wasn't doing what was asked of them, how would you handle that situation on a case-by-case basis?
What you say down staff mean that people is not work?
Yeah, you'd be, you'd be the puppet head, and you'd, you know, you'd be the manager of the staff.
Okay. Now, my staff is, like I say, you know, they are very easy to work with at this point. I don't have much difficulty, but I know that there are team, there's a lot of staff issues, such as, you know, their call-out sick all the time, or the performance is not there, and stuff like that. Unfortunately, because they are not under my team or my direct supervising, right? All I can do is like, I will address it to the supervisor. I say, okay, I, I'm aware of this happening, you know, for this staff. And, you know, I know that, you know, they should do something about it, or some, some kind of maybe internal talk with them, you know, to try to improve it. They could explain it, you know, like, they be a monitor, you know, within other, you know, Assistant Director, you know, so they be, you know, be aware that, you know, they have to perform. Not because just they are not supervised under me, they are not under me or anything. I cannot say a word, but you just still, I still could manage, mention something, but I cannot directly talk to them that way.
And then lastly, is how, how would you describe your, your management style?
The what?
Your management style.
The manual?
So how would you, how would, if you get the position, you know, your way of being a department head, your way of being a boss, you know, how would you manage your department?
I don't know, because I, it is really hardly, it come, like, most of the time, the, I think it's mostly, it's a one-to-one talk is very important. Yeah, to address, you know, like, what is, need to be correct at this point. Like, just like, you know, if we find something that is, have problem, error, or whatsoever, you have to address it right to the point. Don't have to go around it and, you know, try to make people feel better or something. I think, just point it out.
Great. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Miss Leung, to the interview process. You had a couple of questions which they talked to you about, how you'd address, you know, some employee who, we'll say, are less than helpful. But my overall question, you know, I just want you to think about this. The purpose of your position is to ensure to the Lowell City Council that the taxpayers' money is being spent properly. And so you have to know the rules, the regulations, the policies. You really need to know them to be able to oversee all the departments on how they spend their money. And if a department is not following the procedure, how will you know, how will you address that? How will you know that, and how will you address that?
On the business side, you know, if the department or some kind of division, right, is not making money, you know, it's not good to keep the business going on, you know. Maybe, you know, either have a good turnover and a good process to improve the, how they, uh, either they, how to gain the revenue or use the, the money. I think, you know, right now, at this point, I would just, you know, make sure that, I will report it to whoever I report to or the department head. Make sure that they understand the money I have to use correctly, and, you know, and the way how it's supposed to be. And I think, you know, just have to like, by the time, you know, like, if it's come into a problem that is still not being resolved, then I will have to, like, report to the next step-up person, and.
Okay. But realize, in your position as auditor, you're really the one who's responsible to say, you know what, this process has to stop. And so my final question would be, you know, understanding that, if you're talking to a department head who just is going to ignore you and say, look, this is how we've always done this. And you, you know there's a better process. Or you know there's a process that the state wants you to follow. Or there's a regulation that was developed by the Lowell City Council that you must follow. How will you, I mean, how, how will you speak to them about what they have to do to ensure that policies and procedures are followed? That's, I think that's a very important part of this position.
Yes. No, I understand that, you know, when we talk about the government contract, rule and regulations, and compliances too. And we have other thing to follow. I think, you know, it's, it's good, you know, to sit down with that department and saying that, okay, let's go through all this rule and regulation. Let's see, you know, we understand that, you know, whatever the rule and regulation is very clear to say what we have to do to get the work done and to use the fund correctly. That way, you know, is there any other way that, you know, we can improve on our process? But, you know, if the rule and regulation is very straightforward, saying that, you know, this is how you're supposed to do, and you cannot make any change, right? Then, you know, for internally, then we have to look at the whole program to see, you know, is there any other way that we can improve on, and also compliance to rule and regulations.
Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes the questions. If you want to wrap up, and anything else that you think we should know, anything you want to add before we conclude?
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity, for this interview. You know, like, I, well, to be honest, this is the first time that I have so many people to interview me, so it's kind of a little bit stressful, you know, for me. Hopefully, I answered most of your question, but, you know, like, if not, definitely, you know, I could provide more information through email. You know, you have more questions for, for me. And I'm looking forward, you know, to hear from you, what is the next, next step for this positions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for applying. And we'll make our decision and let you know.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator Wong.
Thank you. So what, what do you think the wish of the body would be, Counselor Elliott?
Mr. Mayor, I'd say we just take a two-minute break and reconvene and have a discussion about it.
All right. Two-minute break. Well, we just start it. All right. So we'll start the meeting again. Counselors at home, Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel that after interviewing the candidates, there are only, and just for the people at home that know, there were, there were three, one of, one of the candidates withdrew their name, or maybe two, two may have withdrawn their name. But in light of that, I'm satisfied with voting tonight. And we do have a temporary auditor, and we thank her for her service. But we also know that she's expressed that she is retired, and she's just doing this part-time. And I think we need to proceed with voting for a new auditor tonight. So I make that in a formal motion, so we can have a discussion from other members of the council, that do we want to vote? I'm ready to, to vote, so I'd like to make that in a formal motion that we proceed with.
I'll second it.
Nominating a candidate and voting for the, that candidate tonight.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Mercia. Any discussion? So we would go ahead and make our choice tonight, and offer the position to the highest vote getter. So if there's no discussion at home, is there any? Okay. So do a roll call?
Roll call.
By name?
By name, by the individual we want to select.
Okay. Roll call. Counselor Rourke?
Susan Hickey.
Counselor Samaras?
Susan Hickey.
Counselor Chow?
Susan Hickey.
Counselor Conway?
Susan Hickey.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Susan Hickey.
Counselor Elliott?
Susan Hickey.
Mayor Leahy?
Susan Hickey.
Counselor Mercia?
Susan Hickey.
Counselor Noon?
Susan Hickey.
That's nine votes for Susan Hickey.
Oh, wow. Great.
Thank you. So Mary Calery's here, HR Director. We'll put it in your hands now to contact and work out the details. Counselor Elliott?
So, Mr. Mayor, through you, and I wished a lot of partners on, but this is a, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clerk or Ms. Calery, this is a three-year appointment, according, according to the Mass General Law's estate statute, correct? Okay. Okay. I believe it's, is that right? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the clerk. Is that the same for you, Mr. Clerk?
I know mine is a three-year appointment according to statute. I'm not sure about the auditor.
Well, I think we should clarify that.
That has been, what has been done.
Okay. Okay. I make a motion that the mayor also meet and negotiate any terms. Because I'm, I think that's part of the discussion that has to take place with vacation time and sick time and et cetera. Because we advertise this range, this position in a range, correct? What was that range again? I think I have the job. Okay. So I'd like to make that motion typically, it's the mayor that meets with the individual and either the Lot Department, I think the Lot Department, the Human Resources Director and you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Okay. So just to be clear, does the salary include the $4,500 for the retirement board stipend? Or that's included in the maximum up to? It's separate. Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, what was that again?
That was just a motion that the mayor meet with the candidate, the Lot Department and the Human Resources Director to negotiate the salary.
All right. Second, that's a motion seconded by Council Mercy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. We're all set then. Any other questions? All right. Motion or adjourned by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Noon. Thank you.